Hi, everybody. My name is Sandy Caker. I'm your post two commissioner in Paulding County. We're here at Paulding County Airport and just wanted to fill you in on a few things that are going on here. We've got this airport, man, it's growing. And I just wanted to let you know a couple of things. I would like to introduce you to Nate Shatner, our airport director, and Holly with LH Construction Group.
Good afternoon. My name is Nate Shatner. I'm the airport director for the Paulding Northwest Atlanta Airport. Today, I'm joined by Holly Goins. We are very excited to announce a public-private partnership out here at the airport. Now, we're embarking on a new private-public venture here. They will be doing a long-term land lease with the airport authority and constructing about 35 to 40 hangars here at the airport. These are the small T-hangers, small box hangars. As you may note, there's a huge hangar shortage in Georgia and across the United States. So with our public-private partnership, we're looking here to alleviate that with LH Construction Group.
And as a fellow pilot, I understand the huge shortage of hangar space here in the Atlanta, Georgia area. And so we're building 30 T-hangers and 35 to 40 total hangars, including five to 10 box hangars. And we've put the deposit down in the steel package, so we plan on that coming in sometime in December and hopefully starting the dirt work in November. So our plan is to have these hangars potentially ready by summer 2026 or fall 2026, provided the weather and all the other stars line up.
As part of this development, there is no cost to the airport authority, there's no cost to the taxpayer. LH Construction Group is fronting the costs as part of this project. And its benefits to the airport, we get a steady revenue stream through land lease payments as well as field sales. And also for the county, for the board commissioners, they get avalorm from each of the aircraft that's in those hangars, as well as the avalorm from the buildings. So it's really a win-win for everyone here. It's a win-win for LH Construction Group. It's a win-win for our, you know, 40 pilots have been on our hangar waiting list for so long. It's a win for the state of Georgia, and it's a win for Paulding County as well.
And if you'd like to give us a call, 601-955-0269 for more information.
Also put on your calendar that October the 18th, there's going to be an opportunity that's called Leaf Rubbing. This is an art that is, you know, old as the hills, as they might say. But plan on being at Pickett's Meal on the 18th. This is a five-hour event. It's a drop-in event. You can just show up and be part of it. And I believe it starts around 3 o'clock that afternoon, runs until on up into the evening. So make plans on being at Pickett's Meal, again, 4432 Mount Taver Church Road on the 18th. And, you know, a lot of these talents, a lot of these crafts, this art, it's been lost if we're not careful through time. We all get busy, but this is a time to just slow down a little bit and go back in time and learn some of that, those talents that we can bring back to life. So plan on being at Pickett's Meal on the 18th of October. You can't talk about October without talking about Halloween. On October the 25th, we're back up at Paulding Meadows, Trick or Treat Village, from 2:00 to 7:00 PM on October the 25th. Put your costumes on. You may want to be a ghost, you may want to be a goblin, you may want to be a witch, you may want to be a superhero. That's entirely up to you. But make plans on bringing the family out to Trick or Treat Village. This is a tremendous event. This is gigantic, folks. Been going on for years. The Paulding Parks and Rec, they do an amazing job at hosting this and putting it on. So you want to put it on your calendar and to bring the kids, the grandkids. Hey, bring yourself out. Fill your candy dish up. October 25th, and off from 2:00 to 7:00 PM at Paulding Meadows, you want to be at Trick or Treat Village.
How's everybody? Big crowd today. Boy, you just brought the whole county out to come to get your award, Peyton. That's what it is. Good to see everybody and hope y'all had a good weekend. It's been good on our part. We've been traveling quite a bit. But I'm gonna go ahead and call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners Work Session to order. A little bit late, it's 2:02, and I like to be on time. Just as a start, the elected officials, would you raise your hand and stand up if you're here? I see Sheriff Henson. So just go ahead and tell everybody your name and what you do. Is there anybody else? Good to see the fire chief here. Good to see you, buddy. A lot of good things happening over there. Had a good luncheon with your crew. Did they tell you about it? Yeah, it was fun. Just a reminder, if you've got a cellphone or any kind of electronic advice, please put it on silent or vibrate so it won't interrupt the meeting so we get through a little bit faster. Reminder that you're... No, we're gonna get the marshal come up here first. I better follow my notes. How are you, buddy? Thank you so much. And it's a pleasure to have Reverend Johnny Burroughs back with us. He's my buddy. I think every time he comes into the county, he comes up to my office. We have a little prayer meeting, and it's pretty awesome. He's become a very close friend. So I just want to tell you, I'm gonna get you up to the podium, everybody, and you're gonna open us up in prayer and a pledge. And he's the pastor at Shallow Baptist Church. Been there for 45 years. Still married to the same lady for 49 years, Miss Augustine, I believe is her name. Got one child, one grandkid, Brighton. How old is Brighton now?
He's two and a half.
Two and a half. It keeps you busy, don't it?
It does every day.
I know you spend a lot of time with him, don't you? All the time. He enjoys gardening and really just spending time with his grandson. So if y'all all stand, we'll have prayer and a pledge.
Thank you. Let us pray. Our great God and Father, we give you thanks this morning for the many blessings we enjoy in this great nation. Father God, as we come now, we lift up this board, the leadership, all across America, asking you to give them wisdom, Lord God, as they serve the people of Paulding County, that everything they do will bring glory and honor to you, that the people of Paulding will be blessed by their service. We'll always give you the praise and glory. Remember our police officers, our first responders. Oh, Lord God, who donned a uniform to protect us while we slumberly sleep at night, we'll always give you the glory. We thank you for loving us unconditionally. These things, these things, we ask and pray in the name of the Savior. Amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Johnny.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will have to say, he's probably the best-dressed guy in Paulding County. I was buying some clothes the other day, and I heard my name holler, and he was in there. And I told the lady who helps me, I said, "You need to take care of this guy." She said, "Johnny, I take care of him every time he comes in here. He buys more clothes in here than anybody." It was good to see him, especially out in the public. Just as a reminder, your September the 23rd work sessions and also the board meeting minutes are available for your review. If you hadn't got them, I believe they're on the back table. Announcements for Team Paulding, we're gonna go over the animal control update, engagement, so roll them.
My name is Katie Shipman. I am with Paulding County Animal Control. Every month, we try to choose an organization here in the Paulding County area. This month, we have chosen the Paulding Pregnancy Center. They are looking for items such as diapers, wipes, we've got formula. There's gonna be a whole list available for you. We have a variety of animals here, mostly dogs and cats. Every once in a while, we'll get something fun or interesting. We've had dogs here as long as January. We've had, we've got a great variety of cats right now. We've got some kittens still, but yeah, we've got some really great dogs and really great cats for adoption. We're gonna be at Trick or Treat Village this year. We'll hopefully have some animals, where they're permitting. We'll have some animals available for adoption. October 25th, come out and see us. So if you have any questions, give us a call. Paulding County Animal Control, 770-445-1511. Tuesday through Friday, we're 12 to 4:00. Saturday, 12 to 6:00. Sunday, 12 to 5:00. The only days we are closed are Mondays.
Good job. At this time, the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Assessors would like to recognize Peyton Kellum for receiving the International Association and Assessment Officers, IAAO. How you pronounce that? Cadastral?
Cadastral.
That's the, in my company, we had, is that that big computer? It's called a CAD computer?
Nope.
Kind of like that?
It's mapping by deeds.
Ah, okay. Mapping specialist, and we have James Stokes to start us off.
Well, good morning, everybody. The Assessor's Office, their greatest asset, without a doubt, is our staff. We support and encourage one another to go beyond our job descriptions and strive for excellence. The pursuit not only improves the quality of the work we produce, but the level of service that we're providing our citizens. Yes, this training is essential, but it's also costly. But it's a critical investment in our future. This ensures that citizens continue to receive the highest level of professional service that they deserve. As our workforce continues to evolve, we must never stop encouraging, mentoring, and rewarding team members to strive for their professional goals. With this in mind, I'm proud to honor and share some exciting news in recognition of an outstanding professional achievement within our department. To put this in perspective, since this program launched in 1990, only 247 individuals have achieved this goal. That's out of the IAAO's more than 8,000 members worldwide. Only three people have ever achieved this goal in the state of Georgia, and I'd like to say that we have two of those people. This is not only a testament to the individual dedication and the strive for excellence, but the caliber of our team as a whole. To present this award, I'd like to join me in welcoming former Paulding team member and CMS designee and now chief appraiser for Paulding County, Christine Stinchcomb, as she presents Peyton Kellum with the IAAO Cadastral Mapping Specialist Designation.
Thanks, James, and good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and of course, County Manager. It is an absolute pleasure to be here with all of you this morning. The International Association of Assessing Officers, or IAAO, is a globally respected professional organization that was founded in 1934. With over 8,000 members worldwide, IAAO brings together professionals from government, private industry, academia, who dedicate, who are dedicated to excellence in property assessment and valuation. One of the highest honors in our industry is to earn a professional designation from IAAO. These designations represent a deep commitment to professionalism, leadership, technical expertise in the property assessment and valuation field. Today, we are recognizing an exceptional achievement, the Cadastral Mapping Specialist CMS Designation. This prestigious designation recognizes professionalism and technical competence in cadastral mapping techniques, which is the foundation of all accurate property assessment, valuation, tax administration, and policy and procedure development. Those who hold a CMS designation are proven experts in producing professional maps and graphic representations that directly support property assessments and appraisals in alignment with IAAO standards, as well as state and local requirements. To earn a CMS designation, candidates must have complete extensive training, which includes appraisal fundamentals, standards and practice, as well as professional ethics, principles and techniques of cadastral mapping, as well as advanced mapping. And after completing all of this coursework successfully, then they must pass two other rigorous final components, which is one, an eight-hour case study that focuses on real-world cadastral mapping issues, as well as a four-hour CMS, a master examination testing their knowledge and applicable skills. And today, we celebrate Peyton Kellum, our Georgia's newest CMS designee from IAAO. And I couldn't believe, can't even tell you how proud I am of her, and I wish her all the best, because she deserves every minute of it.
For being my mentor, and then for James, who always pushes us to better ourselves, go further with education. He always pushes for education. That's one of his number-one things, and I'm thankful for that. I'm thankful for my family, for my little girl, and then, of course, all of my coworkers that helped me study and pushed me to keep going for it when it got hard. So I'm just thankful for everybody.
Come up here in front, James, and get a picture. You want your whole family up here?
Yeah.
Come on, family.
Come on. Very good. Thank you.
Good. Peyton, congratulations again. That's a big award. At this time, we have no invited guests, so we'll move right into the bid awards. And the first one is Discuss Action to Approve the Purchase of One 2025 Ford Transit 250 from Hardy Family Ford, an amount of $51,325 utilizing the general fund. Ms. Golden, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
FY 2026 budget includes funding for the purchase of a new Ford Transit 250 for the Department of Property Management. Hardy Family Ford, the state contract holder, currently has a 2025 model on the lot that they've offered to sell us under the 2025 contract pricing. So the prices go up in 2026, so this is a substantial cost savings for us. The total purchase price of the vehicle is $51,325, and this is to be funded through general funds.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Where is this vehicle going?
This is for the property management department. So Jeremiah Fields and his team need this. They've increased their staff, and so this will be a new vehicle for them.
Thank you.
Any others? Thank you, Ms. Golden. Next, we'll discuss action to award the FY 2026 trenchless rehabilitation contract A1 to the lowest reliable bidder, Vortex Services, in the amount of $95,865. Funding for this project will be allocated from Stormwater General Funds. The project is located in post one, two, and four. Mr. Jones.
Morning.
Good morning.
In July of 2025, the Paulding County Stormwater Department solicited bids for the FY 26 trenchless rehabilitation contract one. The project consists of trenchless cured-in-place SIP repairs used to rehabilitate damaged and/or aging pipes by creating a new seamless pipe within an existing pipe. SIP, C-I-P-P, avoids excavation of traditional dig-and-replace methods. All the pipe locations were cleaned with high-pressure water to remove debris and other foreign materials from the pipes into assessed condition for SIP repair. CCTV cameras were then used to inspect the pipes and identify any damages. Six locations have been identified and qualified for SIP repairs under this contract. Paulding County Stormwater Department received three bids for this work from reliable contractors who are performed, who are qualified, perform this type of work for the county. Paulding County reviewed the three bids and recommends award to the lowest reliable bidder, Vortex Services, in the amount of $95,865. If approved, project funding will come from the Stormwater Department General Funds. And again, project locations are in post one, two, and four.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, and the next will be Discuss Action to Award the FY 2026 trenchless rehabilitation contract B1 to the lowest reliable bidder. It's new pipe LLC in the amount of $56,347. Funding for this project will be allocated from Stormwater General Fund. Project locations are in post one and in two.
Similar to the last contract, in July of '25, the Paulding County Stormwater Department solicited bids for the FY 26 trenchless rehabilitation contract 1B. Again, this is using SIP repairs. Three locations have been identified and qualified for SIP repairs under this contract. Paulding County Stormwater Department received three bids for this work from reliable contractors who performed the type of work. Paulding County Stormwater reviewed the three bids and recommends award to the lowest reliable bidder, new pipe LLC, in the amount of $56,347. If approved, funding for the project will be allocated from Stormwater General Funds, and the project locations are in post one and two.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next, we'll discuss the action to award the stormwater maintenance project located at 256 Willapon Court Pipe Replacement to CSTE Incorporated, in the amount of $54,159.77. Quotes for this project are utilized under the fiscal year 2025 Stormwater Infrastructure Replacement and Repair Unit Price Contract. Funding for this project will be allocated from the Stormwater Department General Funds. The project is located in post three.
In November, on November 11th, 2024, Paulding County executed the FY 25 Stormwater Infrastructure Repair and Replacement Unit Price Contract, otherwise known as FY 2025 UPC, with nine contractors. The work was categorized into three groups. Group one, stormwater. Group two, asphalt pavement. Group three, stormline cleaning. Paulding County Stormwater Department identified the maintenance repair project located adjacent to 256 Willapon Court in post three. The project includes cut and plug an existing compromised pipe with flowable fill. New relocated 24-inch storm drain pipe will be installed along with, in a new permanent easement, along with resetting the head wall at the outfall of the storm drain. Two storm sewer manholes will also be installed along with permanent grassing. Based on the UPC contract, four contracts has provided quotes for the project. CSTE has the lowest bid for this project based on the FY 25 UPC in the amount of $54,149.77. We recommend awarding the contract to the lowest reliable bidder, CSTE, in the amount of $54,149.77. And if awarded, the project's funding will be allocated from Stormwater Department General Funds. I have to get you the exact subdivision. I can get that to you.
It says, what city is it in? Because my map says backward, and that or not it?
It probably is not. I think I may have, I have post three here, but I'll give you the exact post. Sorry, I'm kind of drawing a blank right now.
Any others? Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Next, we'll discuss action to approve the purchase of three Ford PVVs from Hardy Family Ford through the state contract, in the amount of $144,555. Funding for these vehicles will come from the Heat Grant Fund, Sheriff Henson.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. Meredith, Ms. Pollard, and Mr. Phillips. It's an honor to be here. We've got a lot more to talk about, but here in new business. But for this particular piece of, that we're gonna talk about, is the funding of three PPV vehicles. And so that's three Ford Explorers that will, the funding will be coming from the Heat Grant, which we just received. And so you guys will adopt that, hopefully, this afternoon. But this is the purchase of the vehicles to go with that, that particular grant, and it's through the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. And HEAT stands for Highway Enforcement of Aggressive Traffic. And the total amount is $144,555, and that's through Hardy Family Ford. They hold the state contract for Ford Explorers. We'll talk about what HEAT entails in the next portion, but that's what we have for this, so we need this approval to get these vehicles on the road. for this. We need this approval to get these vehicles on the road.
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Sheriff Henson. Appreciate that. Next, we'll have Morgan Wilson Library. Is she, are they here? Oh, there you go. Give us an update on the library?
Yes.
Good to have you.
If I can get this set up to the screens. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, perfect. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for getting me on your agenda today and listening to my presentation. My name is-
Get closer to the mic.
Sorry. Hello. My name is Morgan Wilson and I'm the library coordinator for the four libraries in Paulding County. I'm just here to present our statistics from fiscal year 2023 to 2025 to show you the need that we need in expansion and renovation at our Dallas library as well. We are in hopes of adding an additional library. We'll start off with our circulation and patron count numbers. As you can see, last fiscal year, we circulated over 500,000 materials, and that's all four libraries combined. That's a combination of books, audiobooks, DVDs, video games, our part passes that we have in different partnerships. And our patron count for this past fiscal year was almost 230,000 combined for our four libraries. We are projecting that for this fiscal year at the end, we should have over, we should have circulated over 600,000 materials and have had over 250,000 Paulding County residents frequent our libraries. The branch codes, if you are not familiar, PC is Paulding County, that's Dallas, which is right up the street off of East Memorial. NG is New Georgia, which is off of Ridge Road. MR is Maud P. Ragsdale at the Hiram Library, which is off of Hiram Douglasville Highway. And CR is Crossroads, which is in the Cedar Crest-Aquithrough area. Now I will go over the circulation for each library and as a whole. In total, we, as I said, last fiscal year, we circulated over 500,000 items. We are projecting that that is going to be a lot more. As you can see, the circulation for the Dallas library is the highest. We're projecting over 200,000 for next year, next fiscal year. And the patron count, we are expecting it to be more. We know that Paulding County is growing rapidly. Neighborhoods are being built up and more people are in need of library services, whether that is checking out materials or coming to use our computers or Wi-Fi access, coming to get tutoring, all of the different needs that our libraries are able to provide. Our programs, I know that not everyone is familiar with all the programs that the libraries do provide. They're usually used to hearing about the storytimes that we have for the younger children, but we do offer more than that. In addition to the storytimes and baby times, we have other education-focused programs such for homeschoolers that aren't in public schools. They're able to come and meet with fellow homeschoolers, create friendships, as well as just fun things to try and get people in the door, whether that is movie nights or craft nights. Our objective is just to get our patrons and residents in the door for fun things and then we'll push the education on them and leave them wanting more and coming back. Last fiscal year, we had over 1,500 programs combined and the program attendance was over 32,000. As you can see, the program numbers are projected to go up. You can also see that we did have a dip in program attendance. This dip was, we wouldn't like it. Of course, we would like more people there, but due to the overcrowding in our libraries, we have lack of space and we want to adhere to the fire code and have everything in compliance. We also don't have enough parking, specifically at the Dallas library as well as the Hiram Library. In Dallas in particular, when we have programs that are very well attended, they have to park at Sarabat Park and walk, which is not safe. It's, you know, it's a little dangerous having kids on the open road. And we would just like them to be in a closer proximity to the library for parking. So we have had to have more programs, but keep them smaller so that we can keep the attendance smaller and make sure that the capacity stays at a limit that we're comfortable with. These are the programs for all of our libraries individually. As you can see, the programs for Dallas, they are projected to be at over 800 for next year. I will say that they are, the staff is amazing. They're on top of it. They are doing 10 to 15 programs, maybe more a week. We also have third parties come in to do programs for our residents and our patrons. And the attendance, as you can see, it's high as well. There was a little dip, but we are trying to, we're hoping that with the renovation and expansion at Dallas, that that will open up more area, more space for patrons to come and really use the library as a community hub. This is a comparison chart from the Dallas library and the Neva-Lominson Library that is located in Carrollton, Georgia. The square footage for the Carrollton Library is about double of Dallas's, but as you can see, the patron count is similar as well as the circulation, but our attendance is almost double than Neva. So as you can see, we are, we're competing with them, but it's, it's not really working for us or making sense. So we are needing more space and we're also needing more staff members to work. Our staff members, they, they're the best. They do everything that they can to make sure that they are giving lifelong learning and literacy to our community members. But we do need a few more so that we can keep up with the rapid growth of the county as well as the space. Next, I'd like to touch on the per capita funding for the systems in Georgia. The statewide average is about $19. And as you can see, WGRLS, which is the system that we are a part of, West Georgia Regional Library System, we have the lowest per capita out of all of the systems in Georgia. Next is by county. That is a part of the West Georgia Regional Library System. Paulding is also last in the county, even though Paulding, the population is high and we have really high attendance and people coming out, the per capita is low. So we're hoping to get that raised to at least meet the statewide average so that we can make sure that our community members and our residents get everything that they are needing with the funding. And here are also just some numbers that I'd like to throw out at you. Of course, you know, we are more than books. We have programs. We have video games. We have just a central place where people are able to come and meet as a community. We have over 100,000 current library cardholders, over 26,000 computer usage last fiscal year. So that's patrons coming in to use our computer, whether that's for internet services or printing or whatever they may need. We have given over 17,000 take and makes last fiscal year. And a take and make is pretty much something that our programmers put together. It gives them all the materials to create a craft at home as well as the instructions. We kind of had to turn to this beginning in COVID times. We still wanted to make sure that we were able to reach our community with the take and make. So we would have them, they would come pick them up curbside service. And they still able, they, they really loved it, so we continued it. And it's really worked for us, especially since we've had to limit the space for our programs, so we're able to still give them something that they need. We have over 120,000 e-content circulations and e-content that, that are books that you're able to read on your phone, your tablet, your computer, your Kindle, your e-reader, all of those things. Outreach numbers, we have, our library commitment is not just in the buildings of our library, but also being out in the community to reach our residents. In the different outreach programs that we've attended, we've been able to reach to, reach to over 12,000 people. We have almost 60,000 Wi-Fi sessions. Our internet and Wi-Fi access is not cut off when our buildings are closed, so residents are able to come in our parking lots at any hour, use our Wi-Fi and still use our services. Almost 900 meeting and study room usage. I can definitely say that the ask and demand is about triple the amount of that. We're just unable to accommodate everyone what they need for their meetings, whether that's HOA meetings. Sometimes we have people from DFACS coming in to meet with parents and students. And the current amount of materials that we have in our collection overall is over 110,000. And lastly, I would just read a few patron testimonials that we have had. "The library has positively impacted my life and the life of my family by giving us a safe and affordable place to go and spend time as a family by reading, attending storytimes, and supplying crafts and activities." We love hearing things like this. We love to be a safe space where anyone, where all are welcome to come and whether they just want to be there on the computer, whether they're studying for something, whether there's a child studying for a test or an adult studying for a real estate exam or a law bar exam, they're able to come and do that. Another is, "It helped me and my boys find a love for reading together." That one really touched me just because a lot of parents don't have experience or the knowledge to teach their children the fundamentals of literacy. And I feel like that's where we come in. And in doing so, we're able to reach the parents where they can also foster a love of learning as well. And I'll end on this note. "It has been such a fun place that my kids and I can go to enjoy some quality time reading. They love getting on the computers and there is always a fun and free activity that my kids love." The number one thing about the library, everything is free. So you come in, whatever you need, it is free. And we love that we can provide that, especially in these hard economic times where people can come and their taxpayer dollars are going to good use. I will say an estimate, we saved the county about $10 million in the amount of items that they were to check out. If they were to go out and buy the items that they checked out, it would total about $10 million. So we're just hoping that we're able to extend our services and our reach without the, within the county, expanding the Dallas library and hopefully having a new location in the Yorkville area. That's all.
Good. Thank you. Any questions? Thanks for all that you do. And I will ask you this. You're going to hang around after the meeting?
Of course.
There's a couple of people out there, retired teachers and stuff that had some questions and-
Sure.
We'll do that afterwards. And if you'll leave your contact information with Dawn, I've got some people who are not here that would like to ask you a few questions also.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you so much for your-
Tim, I have a quick question. So one of your earlier slides showed that the patronage was almost double at a couple of facilities.
Yes.
And doubled, I think, on two of the others. What, for 2026, what is the, what would be the reasoning for that anticipation that it will, it will almost double in usage?
Just the way that the county is growing, the developments are coming up in the neighborhoods. I know that they're having to add more schools because there are more students. So we feel like the attendance and the patrons coming in will also go up.
Who determines the funding on that slide of all the different systems? Who determines that Northwest Georgia gets the lowest funding amount? Is that because of pop, I mean, it's not population because it's per capita, right? Or how is that?
I'll turn to Kristi. She's a little bit more knowledgeable with that. Kristi Green, she is the Director of West Georgia Regional Library System. If she would like to speak on that.
So the per capita funding is estimated by GPLS, Georgia Public Library Service. And so it is a percentage based on population and the overall budget for the library systems. West Georgia is the lowest out of those peer libraries that were listed on that slide. They are not the lowest in the state.
Who determines that? The funding?
The funding. That's set by our funding agencies, Board of Commissioners, Boards of Education, and our city and, our city governments as well.
Okay.
We also receive state funding, but that is not included in that total amount because that is also population-based across the state.
Okay. I think so.
Anything else? Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate y'all. Just leave your contact information. You'll grab it, Dawn. Any other committees? I've got some that I was, I was asked to, to do, so I'll speak on their behalf. One is the communications. They wanted to let you know that on the September 23rd meeting, we had almost 5,000 people to view this online. So we need your help to spread other words. If they can't come, they can, they can see it on YouTube. They can see it on Facebook. They can find out everything that goes on in our county. Because a lot of people say, well, we don't know what's going on. We've given you the opportunity. And it's also close captioned, so it's, now it's got words that if you, to kind of help more people to watch. And it is growing. The next thing is Deidra wanted me to, to announce one from her department. Early voting started today, so get out and vote. I know we see some stickers that's already voted, so we, she's encouraging us to get out and vote. That's all I had. No public participation on the consent agenda items. There are seven. The first one is confirm the 2026 Paulding County Board of Commissioners designated holiday schedule. The next is award the five-year renewal of the Genetek license renewal to Comsec Systems Incorporated in the amount of $91,101.85. The next is, the third one is to authorize the Board of Commissioners to sign Resolution 2025-36 to adopt the Title Six Plan Update for 2025 in relation to the federal transportation funding. The fourth one is to adopt Resolution 2025-37 to reappoint Ben Emerson to the Paulding County Board of Assessors for a three-year term that will start in January the 1st of 2026 and will at Watson Complex Property. Watson Complex Property. Of those seven, any of my commissioners would like to move those to new business that you know of? Nope. So as we go, there is no old business to discuss. New business. The first one is discuss action to approve the purchase of a Peregrine Technology Incorporated software with the terms of three years at the cost of $146,000 per year. Sheriff Henson?
Well, good morning again. So I've been the sheriff a little over nine months. And if you followed our campaign last year, one of the things you heard was how we wanted to implement and create a real-time crime center. And so this is one of the first steps in achieving that goal. And so Peregrine is actually the name of a bird. It's a Peregrine Falcon. And so those falcons are known for their speed. So kind of keep that in mind as we talk about what, what we're about to do here. But before I get into it too far, I want to introduce you guys to, to two individuals, Mr. Jody Vaughn and Mr. Lord Delly. If y'all wave your hands. So those two gentlemen, those are, right now, those are our criminal analysts. And they are the backbone of, of that entity within the sheriff's office. And so what their job is every day is they look at trends, they look at crime, they look at what's happening, where it's happening, and how can we better combat it? How can we use our resources to put deputies in places to stop crime before it happens? So with that being said, that's where Peregrine comes in. Because Peregrine is going to be an all-encompassing way to collaborate with all of our different systems. So our CAD system, which our dispatch works off of, it tells about different types of calls, when they occur, where they occur. It works with our RMS, which is our report management system, our JMS, which is our jail management system. And so it takes all those things and it puts it all into one easy-to-use package. So instead of going and looking in this application and that application and that application, we'd look in Peregrine and it can create dashboards. They can look at trends. They can map hotspots for crimes. This is the precursor to our real-time crime center. And folks, this is what we got to have. This is vital to the safety of our community. If you look at Cobb County, Cherokee County, some of these other counties that have a little bit more population, they already have real-time crime centers implemented. And that's what we want to do here in Paulding because you guys know we are rapidly growing and we have to stay with the times. Policing like it's 1987, y'all, we can't do that anymore. We have got to keep this county safe like it's 2025 and moving forward. So this price of $146,000, this is a locked-in price that will cover us for three years. There's no chance of an increase. And there's other counties that are using this. Cherokee County Sheriff's Office, Atlanta Police Department, South Fulton PD, Cartersville PD, and there are other entities and agencies that are coming on board. And as they do, we'll be able to share their, our data with them and they'll be able to share their data with us. And so it's like flock cameras we've talked about before in meetings. We'll be able to talk to these other agencies. And we had some recent burglaries of some convenience stores. And we realized that the individuals, some of the suspects, were going to some of these other counties. And so being able to track crime and communicate with our other local agency partners, we can talk about the things that are happening and better combat crime. can talk about the things that are happening and, and better combat crime, not only here in Paulding, but in other counties as well. Because y'all, these criminals, they don't know and they don't understand county lines and they don't care. And so we have to, we have to police like that now. So it, if you need any more detailed information, we can provide that to you in between now and the time to vote. But this is what we're super excited about. Jody and Lloyd have worked their tails off on vetting this and talking with other agencies that currently use this software system. And so this is, this has been very, very heavily vetted. And so we're excited about this, as it will, like I said before, be the precursor to a real-time crime center for our county. Does anyone have any questions?
I do, of course. Sorry. I just wondered, was this vetted through our IT department for like cybersecurity reasons and things like that?
Absolutely, yeah. Anytime we incorporate technology, we always work with Mr. Lyons and his team.
Great.
Because if it won't work with them, then we certainly can't make it work for us. And so yes, we have worked with Mr. Lyons and our IT department and they are on board. And so they've been great partners with us and we're thankful for that partnership that we do have with them.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
When would it be implemented and how long would it take to implement it?
That's a great question. I'm gonna refer to Mr. Vaughn if you want to come up. Hopefully sooner rather than later, but Jody will be able to tell us.
Good morning. From what I've talked to Cole, our sales rep and everything, if we get it approved today, we could start working on implementing everything, getting it in place over the next couple of weeks. And within the next month or so, we could be up and going and have full access, not to just ours, but these other counties.
So I really appreciate your consideration. We understand this is a lot of money, but if you want safety, you've got to spend money. Safety is paramount. There is absolutely nothing more important than the safety of our, our families, our community in this county.
All right, next, any other questions? Next, we'll discuss action to authorize the acceptance of the HEAT grant through GOHS, which is the Georgia Governor's Office of Highway Safety and NFFSA, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration for the physical year 2026. I believe that amount is $389,017.59.
Yes, sir. And so what we spoke about earlier was a portion of this grant that hopefully you guys will approve later on this afternoon. That was the portion to purchase the vehicles. So this is a grant through the Governor's Office of Highway Safety and it's Highway Enforcement of Aggressive Traffic. And so it is for three deputies, three patrol cars, and we are responsible for 5,760 enforcement hours. And so all that'll be documented, logged, every contact that our deputies make with one of our community members or anybody they stop will all be documented, the type of contact it is, whether it's a speeding contact, a seatbelt contact, a DUI contact, all that will be notated and it will be sent to the state. And it's very important, this is not about tickets. So I need to make sure that everyone understands that. This is about contacts and education. There's actually a component in here to where they have to go, our gentleman, I'm going to introduce him in just a moment, they will go to our local high schools and they will educate youth 15 to 18 years old on the dangers of speeding, drinking and driving, things of that nature. So they, it is required per the grant that they go into our schools and so they will be doing that. And so I want to, without any further ado, introduce the folks that are going to be part of this HEAT unit. So Corporal Carl Brown, if you'll wave your hand, Carl, Deputy Alex Davis, and then Deputy Britton McCann. He's actually in a car seat installation class for the remainder of this week, so he's not here. But I just want to say a quick couple of things about Corporal Brown. He came to me after I got elected because he knew this was part of what we were trying to do to increase specialized units. And that's exactly what we done. So I tasked Carl with this, he took it and ran with it. And so this is really, he's the hero of the day for this one because he put in the man hours, worked with Major Godsey, Captain Miller, and the individuals from GOHS. And he, he did the lion's share of work in getting this across the finish line. So I'm very thankful for Carl and his team. Y'all, these cars are gonna be black. And so when you see the black cars, you better know that it's coming. The blue lights, they're coming next. So this is about slowing folks down. One of the things I heard when I campaigned last year was, we are sick and tired of seeing folks flying up and down our roads in Paulding County. And this is one of the first steps to helping slow folks down. These gentlemen will be out not every day, but many, many days, at different hours of the day. And they will be stopping cars for various traffic violations, speeding, aggressive driving, DUI, seatbelts, things of that nature. So look out for the black cars. They're, they're gonna be out there. Harley already has the vehicles on the lot, so that's why we wanted to make sure we got this on the agenda today. So with your approval, we can go ahead and get those vehicles and get them outfitted and they will be out on the road. And so something to note, these vehicles will not look like our vehicles. The decals for every HEAT unit across the state of Georgia are all exactly the same. The only difference you'll see is instead of, on ours, it'll say Paulding County Sheriff, the other counties would say Douglas County Sheriff or Carroll County Sheriff. That's the only difference in the cars. They'll all look the same, they're all black. We're getting the Ford Explorer. Some counties have different models, but all the vehicles are black and all the decals are exactly the same across the entire state.
Are they gonna really be alert for all the drivers that are on their phone that's called so many, so many wrecks?
Yes, sir. And if, a couple, I think it was last week, or maybe it was a couple of weeks ago, the Georgia State Patrol did a concentrated patrol and they were looking for that very thing. And so this is something I'm excited about because Carl and his team can partner with the State Patrol as well as the cities of Dallas and Hiram. And we already have some events planned coming up, some, some concentrated patrols. And so that's definitely something that we'll be looking at is people utilizing cellphones while driving. We all know that's illegal, so that's something they'll be combating as well. But we really are excited about this. When you think back and look at what we've been able to accomplish this year, we have doubled our K-9 unit from three to six. We have well over doubled our traffic unit from two to now five. So we are doing exactly what we said we would do and we're excited. There's obviously more to come. This real-time crime center is exciting, but there's lots of big things happening at the Paulding County Sheriff's Office. And with your support and commitment, we're making those things happen. So kudos to you guys as commissioners for caring about law enforcement and safety of our community because we appreciate the partnership.
I have a question, Ashley.
Yes, ma'am.
Why are all the crashes at traffic lights? Isn't that supposed to slow down the crashes?
It is. And so that's definitely something that, that these gentlemen will be looking into. You know, you gotta think, people are not paying attention. I think that's what a lot of it boils down to is just people are not paying close enough attention. Either they think they can make it, they say that yellow light, and what are people doing to yellow light? They hammer down, right? They don't start slowing down, they hammer down. And so we gotta change that mindset. And it's about, that's one of the components of what they're trying to accomplish is changing that mindset. Used to, back in the day, we had this HEAT grant before. We had the HEAT grant and a DUI task force. And we had one of the highest fatality rates in Georgia. And we implemented the HEAT grant and the DUI task force years ago and it significantly dropped the fatality rate. And we've got another high fatality rate. So we've got to get that under control. We've got to slow folks down, educate them, make them understand that we've got to pay more attention while we're driving.
Let them know what red light means, yellow light means, and green light means.
Do a colors class.
Yellow means start slowing down, not hammer down. That's right.
I heard you say it's illegal to use your cellphone when you're driving. The way I remember the law, it's illegal to have it in your hand when you're driving, but you can use it as long as it's...
That's correct, yes. You can't have it in your hand. If you have a Bluetooth device or a headphone or something of that nature, you can utilize that, but you cannot have the device in your hand, you can't be emailing, even at a red light.
Hands-free.
And that's what people think. Well, I'm at a red light, I'm stopped. It's still illegal. You cannot have that device in your hand. You have to have it in a cradle or in some kind of hands-free device with an earpiece or utilizing your Bluetooth on your vehicle.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good clarifier. Thank you for that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sheriff Henson.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Next, we'll discuss action to authorize the acceptance of the CHIN grant through the Criminal Justice Coordination Council, the CJCC, for the physical year 2026. The amount of that is $94,222. Ms. Myers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Paulding County has been awarded the FY26 CHINs Grant, and this stands for Children's in Need of Services. This is to facilitate children that are going through programs and that need rehabilitation back into the community and then is to help with their families reintegrate after they've had some sort of trauma. This program is going to be facilitated through our juvenile court system. The $70,540 will be for the program services. $23,682 will be for the salary and benefits of the coordinator, with a total grant award of $94,222 with no required match from the county. The county has reached out and has the choice provider for the services through Family Alliance with Paulding. And we're hoping that this will facilitate prevention, life skills, job skills, employment training, job placement, educational support, and mentoring.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Next, we will discuss action to authorize the Chairman to sign the Georgia Public Library Service Construction Grant for the Dallas Library. Ms. Pollard.
Yes, several weeks ago, we were in communication with West Georgia Regional Library and they had educated us about a grant program through the state, the Department of Regents, that we could apply for renovations and expansion of that Dallas, of the Dallas Library. So we, the grant is a maximum of $3 million and the first million contains a 10% match and the second two million are 50/50 match.
So for this particular grant, the total estimated cost of the project is about 4.6 million. That would include a state portion of 1.9 million with a local match of 1.1 million and then the additional amount would be for the county. This will add 4,000 additional square foot, four square feet for the Dallas Library and it will expand the children's library section primarily. And it will include some external renovations as well.
Is there going to be more parking available? Because they said there was a parking issue.
Your point, this does not particularly include parking, but we do realize that there is a parking issue that has to be addressed out there with the expansion.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Pollard. Next, to discuss action to authorize the Chairman to sign the Georgia Public Library Service Construction Grant for the New Yorkville Library.
This is a second opportunity that has come to us. We don't have a lot of, well, my understanding is GPLS has some additional funding, that the competitive process isn't real stringent right now, so there's more opportunity for us. So we have identified a need in the Yorkville area. We do not have a exact, an exact location for this site, but they have agreed that we could use the property acquisition as a portion, as a part of our match. We are requesting the $3 million for this grant that was awarded. It's the same thing, 10% for the first million, 50% for the next $10 million. And we have five years to spend the funds.
I have a comment. Yorkville is long overdue for a library. It is very much needed. We realized that during COVID and during the storms when our children couldn't go to school. We had to take school buses out there so that they could come to the school bus to get internet to do their work. So I think that a library out there is much needed and very much needed.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, too, especially after the graphs we've just seen on the use, the actual use of our libraries in Paulding County. But, so I'm all for a library in Yorkville.
Next and last one is to discuss action to approve the emergency purchase of a cut-in pipe replacement on a 36-inch transmission main with HD excavation and utilities in the amount of $59,750. This purchase is funded through the Renewal and Extension Fund and the project is located in Post 4. And you can tell them how that happened, too.
Good morning. On the 26th of September, we found that one of our manholes was having, we have gate valves along the 36-inch main that takes water from our weight, from our water facility up at Richland Creek, delivers it down to Dallas and basically is our main transmission main. On the morning of the 26th, we heard that one of the gate valves was overflowing. We came, we looked, we found that one of the seals on one of our taps actually had given way. So we looked and we knew this was going to be a big fix. Our tanks were full, our storage tanks throughout the system. We opened some additional lines that we had to bring additional water into the county. And when we were able to drain the line and get down to the, the actual port itself where we had our saddle, we found there was an eight-inch gash in the line. That eight-inch cut in the line, we knew would not fit under our saddle. We had to back off what we were doing, allow a day for the tanks to refill. We came out again that Sunday night and based on having a cut in the line, we actually had to do a cutout repair. And the cutout repair that we did Sunday night, September 28th, came to a cost of $59,750. The repair crews were supplied by HD excavation utilities. And we would like the Board to support us, or approve the emergency purchase of a cut-in replacement on the 36-inch transmission main with HD excavations and utilities in the amount of $59,750. And we are continuing to do additional work of inspection so that we don't get caught in this situation again.
Do you know how the cut gash got there? I mean, it didn't happen by itself, right?
What, what we have in going through and looking at the saddles, the water is at a very high pressure and this is one of the low points, which was pushing close to 300 pounds per square inch. When it came underneath the saddle, because we were going to repair the saddle, we thought we was leaking, but what it did is it concentrated that highly pressurized water and it ate through the top of the pipe.
Oh.
Okay, so that's why we're revisiting and looking at all the saddles currently to go ahead and address any issues ahead of time.
So is there a redesign as part of this? I mean, in other words, what's going to stop it from happening again?
Well, we're, we're, we're gonna stop it. We're gonna try to catch it because we are, right now, we have crews that are going, we're getting pictures of all the, we have 23 different vaults that we have to look at where we have ports. And so right now, we have crews that are going through and looking at them. And we are going to be talking to the Water and Supply Advisory Board tomorrow about it on how we're going to address long-term having these seals replaced on the other...
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other areas.
Any other question, comments? Y'all, be in, your thoughts and prayers for your dad and also your injury.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
That is the conclusion of our regular business. There's no public participation at this time. There's no public participation at this time. Would ask for any comments or announcements that need to be made from our board. I do remind you to vote early. And we have been in Jekyll Island doing training. We're going to Rome and do some more. We're gonna be the training, the most educated board you've ever seen in your entire life. But I will tell you this, when I'm in ACCG, we're very fortunate to have this crew up here in comparison to all 159, and especially our attorney. He is now, I think he is, what are you, what are you in the ACCG?
I am the President of the County Attorney's Section.
And that's a privilege. And I will tell you this right here, you probably don't know this, but yesterday was his birthday. So y'all, y'all give him a high-five and wish him happy birthday, and he likes gift cards, he said, so...
Should we sing?
No, I was gonna do that, I didn't know if it was proper or not.
I would find an ordinance that prohibited singing at his birthday.
Oh, that's wonderful. That is actually the conclusion of this, we will be...
Can I mention something right quick?
Yes.
So you mentioned that everybody needed to go vote. We wanted to take just a moment to remind people that there is a portion of the county, that's countywide. So there are two things for countywide ballot. The first one is Public Service Commission, so educate yourself and go vote on that. The second one is the floating local option sales tax. We passed an intergovernmental agreement in Sept, on September 23rd, here in open session, that allowed us to place on the ballot a question to, for you, the citizens of the county, to tell us if you would like to impose a 1% sales tax to be used to reduce your property taxes. So in a nutshell, that's what that's for. If you have any questions, please let us know. We're not advocating for or against, but we are just trying to educate you so that you know what you're, what's on the ballot when you read it. Any questions?
Any questions, comments?
I have a question. Tabitha, is that 1% sales tax, it goes directly to? It can only be used for?
That 1% sales tax is sent to us by the state. So your, your businesses will collect it, they will submit it to Department of Revenue. Department of Revenue will submit it to us. We are to hold it, we cannot use it, not one penny of it, for the entire year. So if we begin collections in January, we will hold it from January to December 31st. The amount that is collected will then be used to roll back the millage rate. So for '26, the way this would work is 20, we would collect from January 2026 to December 2026. It would be used to roll back the millage rate in 2027, so the 2027 digest.
Can you also just repeat, I know we did this in the last session, but will you anticipate that might be, and what that roll back might be?
A penny generates about $31 million throughout the county. Our millage, so our property tax collections are, for MNO, are 43 million. So it would, and our portion would be about 28 million, because we share it with the city of Dallas and the city of Breswell. City of Hiram doesn't currently have property tax, so it doesn't include them. It would roll us, roll the millage rate back about 67% for the MNO.
You can do it after the, after the meeting, but I don't think you can do it here. After the meeting, just talk to Tabitha. I guess if we hold that for a year, that is in an interest-bearing account.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I have a question, I'm sorry, go ahead. Did you have another question or comment?
No, that's it, I wanted you to talk.
So I wondered, I mean, people have asked, what does that go against? And it's the county MNO only is what it goes against, but that's just part of your tax bill. So it doesn't really matter, it just lowers your tax bill. And then there's been some other questions too, and I think we're working on some communications to help answer some of those questions, is that correct?
Yes, our current millage rate is 4.3. And we would go through the same process, so this doesn't change anything about the process. And we start with a digest value, June 1st, we publish a budget. We set a digest, set our millage rate in August, that would be no different. The process doesn't change at all, this is just an amount to roll back. So if you had a change in that millage rate, it would be done during the process, open meetings to increase or, if you were to have an increase, those are done with three public hearings. The same with this sales tax or without this sales tax. This is just the opportunity for the citizens to tell us if they would prefer to roll the millage rate back with a, use a sales tax to reduce their property tax.
Okay, thank you.
And I would encourage you to go downstairs and, and get some of these sample and, and read over them before you vote, but do vote. Anything else? We are going to go into executive session to discuss real estate. So I'll need a motion to adjourn, go into executive session, and we will adjourn from there and won't be coming back until 2 o'clock.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor, aye?
Motion to adjourn... To executive session for real estate.
And is there a second?
Second.
Good, Ms. Galloway, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, have a good afternoon, see you at 2.